I note that the hour has come, that a quorum of the council is present. This council will now come to order. All members will please take your seats. Visitors will retire to their seats outside the rails. Before proceeding, I would ask all those present to please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Clarence Hayes Jr. of Truth and Life Empowerment Community Ministries Incorporated. He is here today as the guest of Councilmember Jim Harady. I will ask all members and guests to please rise.
Thank you. I state that my name is Clarence Hayes. I'm the pastor of Truth and Life Empowerment Communities Ministries located at 700 East Area Avenue in Philadelphia, PA. And I am also an educator in the school system. I work at the Pathway School where I work with kids with emotional needs. Let us pray. Precious and eternal Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here today. God, I pray right now that you would just bring the spirit of unity in this room, allow it to be productive, allow the leaders to come together, and allow our city to become a better city. God, we thank you for these great leaders that you have assembled on today. I pray that you would continue to bless them and lead them in the way that they should lead the city of Philadelphia. In addition, I thank you for our great mayor, Cheryl Parker. She is a gift to the city. I pray that you would continue to bless her and lead her in the way that she would lead this city. God, I thank you for each and every person in this room, every free living spirit. I pray that you would bless them and touch them and meet them where they are at. And God, most of all, we thank you for allowing us to be a part of this great city, the city of Philadelphia. And God, I pray that you would touch our youth. I pray that you would touch our families. And I pray that you would give us the guidance to combat gun violence in this city. God, we thank you, we love you, we appreciate you. In Jesus' holy name I pray, amen.
Amen. Council will be at ease. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 25, 2024. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Baz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 25, 2024 be approved.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 25, 2024 stand approved. All those in favor will indicate by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leaves of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, a leave of absence is requested for Councilmember Young.
The Chair thanks the Councilmember, leave will be granted. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
President, on the behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
The Chair thanks the Councilmember. The Chair now recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the legislative matters stated by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion carries. The Chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, we welcome you to our council session. We appreciate your taking the time to join us as we attend to the legislative affairs of our city. We certainly invite you to come again. I want to also take a special moment to welcome back to this chamber former Councilmember the Honorable Wilson Good Jr. Let's give him a round of applause, please. I'm extremely proud and honored to have the opportunity to also welcome the first African-American mayor of the city of Philadelphia, former mayor, the Honorable Mr. Wilson Good Sr. We thank both of you for joining us today, and we thank you for your service and contribution to our great city. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Maad, who will present a resolution honoring the founding of Sigma Pi Phi Fraternity Incorporated on the occasion of its 120th anniversary with Sire Patrick Oates. And those accompanying him, please join the Councilmember at the podium. Councilmembers that will be participating in this presentation are Councilmember Squiller, Councilmember Landau, Councilmember Driscoll, Councilmember Phillips, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, and Councilmember O'Rourke.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. It is my honor and pleasure today to recognize and celebrate the founding of the Sigma Pi Phi Fraternity Incorporated on the occasion of its 120th anniversary. Before we begin actually reading our resolution, I just wanted to underscore how critical it is for our city to see this array of accomplished men, black men behind me, who have persevered and showed resilience over the years to make sure they have broken through all these barriers. We have mayors, we have doctors, we have lawyers. We have a world-renowned economist who is a presidential appointee. We need our city to see this glory. We need a celebration of all the work that has gone in, and it was not easy. It is still not easy, and we need to get encouraged by these folks who have persevered and have presented themselves in service of humanity. So I am very, very pleased to be able to present this resolution, and I will start with, whereas the Sigma Pi Phi fraternity was founded in Philadelphia on May 15, 1904 at 508 South 10th Street at the home of Dr. Edwin C. J. Turpin Howard. And whereas Sigma Pi Phi, a fraternity of college graduates and professional black men, was born at the dawn of the 20th century during a time when intellectual and social interaction for men of color in their professional endeavors were closed or limited by virtue of race and... Whereas Dr. Henry McKee Minton, a pharmacist and later a physician, recognized and foresaw the need for African-American men of distinction to interact with one another and become members of a close fraternal union for their mutual benefit and to enhance their undeserved, underserved communities and...
Whereas Dr. Minton was a pharmacist at Douglas Hospital, Philadelphia's first black hospital, and later, after receiving his medical degree from Thomas Jefferson College of Medicine, was a co-founder of Mercy Hospital, the second black hospital in Philadelphia and...
Whereas Dr. Minton convened the first boulay meeting of Sigma Pi Phi fraternity with Dr. Edwin Turpin Howard, the first African-American graduate of Harvard Medical School who practiced medicine and hosted the meeting in his home, Dr. Argonan Jackson, chief surgeon at Mercy Hospital, and Dr. Richard J. Ward, a dentist and fellow Mercy co-founder and...
Whereas, two weeks later, they would be joined by Dr. Eugene T. Henson, 1873 to 1960, a graduate of the Medical School of the University of Pennsylvania, who had joined the staff of Douglas Hospital, and Dr. Robert J. Abel, 1875 to 1929, a graduate of Hahneman Medical College and co-founder of Mercy Hospital and...
Whereas, all six founders lived in a strictly segregated place and time, and they were further united by their dedication to providing quality healthcare to the African-American community in Philadelphia and...
Whereas, Sigma Pi Phi Alpha Boulay has been a source of strength, intellectual activism, and social engagement for Philadelphians of distinction in a variety of professions, including, for example, the Honorable Raymond Pace Alexander, City Councilman, judge, and civic leader; Dr. Bernard Watson, educator, civic leader, and foundation president; Robert W. Vogel, newspaper publisher; the Honorable James Giles, judge; the Honorable Leon W. Tucker, judge; Dr. Marie C. Clifford, physician and healthcare administrator; Dr. Edward S. Cooper, physician; Osagi Imasagi, esquire, business leader; the Honorable Reverend Dr. W. Wilson Good Sr., mayor; the Honorable A. Leon Higginbotham Jr., judge, educator, and scholar; Dr. Walter T. Lomax, physician, healthcare provider, and business leader; Dr. Horace Man Bond, president of the Lincoln University; Gregory Devens, corporate CEO; H. Patrick Swiger, president of Howard University; Dr. Melvin Chisholm, physician; the Dr. Bernard E. Anderson, economist; Reverend Dr. Alan E. Waller, pastor; the Honorable William H. Gray III, congressman; and Dr. Patrick M. Oates, the 120th anniversary sire archon of the founding member boulay of Alpha and...
Whereas, today, Sigma Pi Phi is a fraternity with over 150 member boulays or chapters throughout the United States, the Bahamas, and London, that since its founding has consistently served as a beacon and a refuge for distinguished black men like the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Dr. W. E. B. Dubois, attorney Vernon Jordan, Dr. Benjamin E. Mays, the Honorable Ronald Brown, Attorney General Eric Holder, tennis great Arthur Ashe, Congressman John Lewis, and Ambassador Andrew J. Young.
Whereas, Sigma Pi Phi has created and endowed an eponymous foundation that, among other things, provides significant scholarship to African-American youth across the United States. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby honor the founding of Sigma Pi Phi Fraternity Incorporated on the occasion of its 120th anniversary, and be it further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to representatives of Sigma Pi Phi Fraternity Alpha Boulay as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body.
Congratulations. The Chair recognizes Sire Patrick Oates for remarks.
Council President Kenyatta Johnson, Councilwoman Nina Maad, members of City Council, ladies and gentlemen, good morning.
Good morning.
As was mentioned, my name is Dr. Patrick M. Oates, and I am the sire archon of Alpha Boulay Sigma Pi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. On behalf of the members of Alpha Boulay, I'd like to thank you for this recognition. On May 15, 1904, Sigma Pi Phi fraternity was founded here in the city of Philadelphia, the citadel of freedom, liberty, and black achievement. Six distinguished African-American men, who were informed by other great Philadelphians like Bishop Richard Allen, Bishop Absalom Jones, William Still, James Fortin, and Octavius Caddo, conceived the idea of a fraternity where men of distinction, sophistication, and high professional attainment could come together to get to know the best of one another and to aid one another to achieve what would not be possible to achieve alone. The founders of the fraternity, Doctors Henry McKee Minton, Dr. Algernon Rashir Jackson, Dr. Edwin C. Howard, Richard Warwick, Doctors Richard Abel and Eugene Henson, would later establish the nation's third hospital founded to serve the needs of the growing underserved African-American community. Mercy Hospital would later merge with Douglas Hospital, the city's first black hospital, becoming the Mercy Douglas Hospital, a training ground for African-American physicians and nurses to serve the citizens of Philadelphia. Today, we boast a membership of over 5,000 members with 150 member boulays throughout the United States, the United Kingdom, and the Bahamas. Our members have distinguished themselves in numerous areas of profession, professional life, including medicine, law, higher education, business, journalism, technology, politics, civic life, and the arts. Archons are leaders, making an indelible mark on communities throughout the world. Our memberships include most celebrated men, some of the world's most celebrated men, Dr. King, Dr. Dubois, Dr. Elaine Locke, Dr. Charles Drew, Judge Raymond Pace Alexander, just to mention a few. As we celebrate the 120th anniversary of the founding of the fraternity, let us remember the contributions of these six great men of Philadelphia. May we forever be mindful of their efforts to serve those who were less fortunate. Thank you again for this illustrious recognition.
Council will be at ease. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke, who will present a resolution declaring May 2, 2024 to be Prince Hall Day in the city of Philadelphia and honoring the outstanding civic and philanthropic contributions of the Prince Hall Grand Lodge of Pennsylvania throughout Philadelphia and across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. With Eric Williams Wright, worshipful singer Gran Wharton, and those accompanying him, please join the Councilmember at the podium. Also joining Councilmember Nick O'Rourke would be Councilmember Brother Jim Harady, Councilmember and Brother Councilman Curtis Jones Jr., and the District Councilmember Cindy Baz. Baz. Shout out to Sheba Lodge Number Seven. The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning to the viewing and listening public, all of our municipal family and brothers all. Good morning.
Morning.
Some years ago, I woke up a morning after a long night and recited these words. Last night, I took an oath and obligation. This morning, I'm closer to my God, and I'm a master mason. And now declaring May second, two thousand twenty-four to be Prince Hall Day in the city of Philadelphia and honoring the outstanding civic and philanthropic contributions of the Prince Hall Grand Lodge of Pennsylvania throughout Philadelphia and across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Whereas Prince Hall is widely recognized as the father of black Freemasonry in the United States, the Brotherhood that helped to initiate has been an important part of Philadelphia's and the United States' historical landscape since our nation achieved its independence. And today, the Brotherhood has a membership of over three hundred thousand individuals in four thousand five hundred lodges worldwide. Whereas Prince Hall helped to establish African Lodge Number Four Fifty-Nine of Philadelphia, the first Masonic Lodge for Black Masons in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on September twenty-second, seventeen ninety-seven. In eighteen fifteen, African Lodge Number Four Fifty-Nine joined with other nascent Masonic Lodges in Philadelphia to form the first African independent grand lodge of free and accepted Masons, the historical antecedent of the most worshipful Prince Hall Grand Lodge of Pennsylvania and...
Whereas Prince Hall Masons have played important roles in our cities and Commonwealth histories, advocating passionately for the abolition of slavery, fighting on behalf of freedom in the Civil War, and leading in the movement for civil rights throughout the twentieth century and beyond. Throughout its history, the most worshipful grand lodge and its brothers have worked tirelessly to advance justice and equality on behalf of all people. And whereas, as the most worshipful grand lodge of Pennsylvania continued to grow in Philadelphia and across the Commonwealth at the turn of the twentieth century, the spirit of brotherhood, service, and charity began to truly shine. Prince Hall Masons have played an invaluable role in fostering connections within the African-American community, supporting philanthropic efforts and endeavors, and advocating on behalf of the less fortunate. And...
Whereas today, the most worshipful Prince Hall Grand Lodge of Pennsylvania is involved in countless philanthropic endeavors, giving back to the community and spreading brotherhood across our city and Commonwealth. This council is pleased and proud to celebrate the contributions of the grand lodge and to join with Brotherhood in recognizing May second as Prince Hall Day. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Philadelphia that the council hereby declares May second, two thousand twenty-four to be Prince Hall Day in the city of Philadelphia and honors the outstanding civic and philanthropic contributions of Prince Hall Grand Lodge of Pennsylvania throughout Philadelphia, across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Further resolved, that an embossed copy of this resolution be presented to the most worshipful Prince Hall Grand Lodge of Pennsylvania as evidence of our sincere sentiment of this legislative body.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Behold how good and how pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity. I would say to you today that this Prince Hall's contributions throughout history is not just historic, but it is every bit as relevant today as it was then, and the mission has just changed. And thank you for dawning so much light in this hall, so much light in this room. I had no idea my brother was a mason. I had no idea, but my colleague was a mason, and I knew my president was a mason. But now, we are bound by a different, different calling, a different mission. And I want to say to you, I challenge all of us to do what our sisters and sororities have done and step up to the plate and be a part of our young men's guiding light to manhood, perseverance, so that we can fill another generation and be able to say, like Member Phillips always says, "How are the children?" And we can respond, "They are well." Thank you.
The Chair now recognizes Eric Williams Wright Worshipful Senior Grand Warden for remarks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Eric Williams. I am the Wright Worshipful Senior Grand Warden, and I want to bring your greetings on behalf of our most worshipful Grand Master, the Honorable Paul Anthony Hibner. I'm going to ask our Grand Historian Felix Garden Howard to just give a few remarks, and then I'll close it out.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The most worshipful Prince Hall Grand Lodge of Pennsylvania for more than two and a quarter centuries have strived for equality, freedom through self-determination. They have played a critical role in the communities throughout the Commonwealth by influencing the culture, the institutions, and African-American social-economic progression. They have undeniably been yoked to their international roots with England or Great Britain by two hundred and forty years by way of a charter in seventeen eighty-four issued to Reverend Prince Hall of Boston, Massachusetts, the noted pioneer of African-American Freemasonry in America. Prince Hall Mason's historic journey has included the establishment of black churches by Reverend Absalom Jones, our first Grand Master, and Reverend Richard Allen, founder of the AME denomination and their first bishop. He was also our first treasurer of African Lodge Four Fifty-Nine Philadelphia. They provided leadership in the secular aspects of the black community. They have, they have directed involvement in the early abolitionist movements which continued through the eighteen hundreds. Then after the Civil War, the Great Migration happened where former enslaved, enslaved African-Americans migrated to the industrial north. And then, of course, our civil rights era, and then now today. Their contributions have been philanthropic, educational, artistic, military, legal, civic, as well as countless professional and domestic arenas. Ultimately, Prince Hall Masonry in Pennsylvania has a rich and fascinating history that has now journeyed into the third decade of the twenty-first century. The principles of dispensing charity, caring for the downtrodden, educating our youth, and discipline of community service remain the focal points of the Prince Hall Grand Lodge of Pennsylvania. With fervency and zeal, the hundred and six Grand Masters who have led this august body have reinforced the quest to make good men better and reflect how our great Creator has brought us this far by faith. Thank you.
Amen. So as you can see, it was stated by several of the members up here, service is no secrecy. Masons have been serving since we've been founded. Our founders, our forefathers actually, how am I going to put this? Our forefathers wanted us to serve the communities. We believe that, Brother Johnson, we thank you for the invitation, and we're here to support you, your colleagues, in any capacity that you call us. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel will be at ease.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I would like you to join me in welcoming students from Roxborough High School who have come down to watch how our government works and to learn how to take our place. Please help us. Would the students please stand? Thank you for coming down. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. The next order of business is communications. The Chair requests that the Sergeant-at-Arms deliver the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk.
To the President and the members of council of the city of Philadelphia, I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a draft of a resolution entitled, "Authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to Execute and Deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority Deeds Convoying Fee Simple Title to Fifteen Thirty-two West Loudoun Street in the Eighth Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank Fee Simple Title to such properties pursuant to Section sixteen dash four oh five of the Philadelphia Code. And an ordinance authorizing the City Treasurer on behalf of the city to enter into an amendment agreement with Citizens Bank National Association for provision of payroll banking services to the city, all under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance constituting the nineteenth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, providing for certain amendments to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending the seventeenth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, Bill Number One Nine Zero Four Three Two of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, approved by the mayor on June twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, to authorize an increase in the aggregate principal amount of airport revenue bonds or notes to be issued under the seventeenth supplemental ordinance from three hundred and fifty million dollars to five hundred and fifty million dollars, exclusive of cost issuance, including underwriters discount, original issue discount, capitalized interest, funding of deposits to the sinking fund reserve account, if necessary, and similar items. Further amending said ordinance, Bill Number One Nine Zero Four Three Two, to authorize the pledge for security and payment of some or all of the obligations and a lien and security interest in passenger facility charges to the extent available and authorizing certain other actions. And an ordinance constituting the twentieth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending the seventeenth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, Bill Number One Nine Zero Four Three Two of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, approved by the mayor on June twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, to authorize an increase in the aggregate principal amount of airport revenue bonds or notes to be issued under the seventeenth supplemental ordinance from three hundred and fifty million dollars to five hundred and fifty million dollars, exclusive of cost issuance, including underwriters discount, original issue discount, capitalized interest, funding of deposits to the sinking fund reserve account, if necessary, and similar items. Further amending said ordinance, Bill Number One Nine Zero Four Three Two, to authorize the pledge for security and payment of some or all of the obligations and a lien and security interest in passenger facility charges to the extent available and authorizing certain other actions. And an ordinance constituting the twentieth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending the seventeenth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, Bill Number One Nine Zero Four Three Two of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, approved by the mayor on June twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, to authorize an increase in the aggregate principal amount of airport revenue bonds or notes to be issued under the seventeenth supplemental ordinance from three hundred and fifty million dollars to five hundred and fifty million dollars, exclusive of cost issuance, including underwriters discount, original issue discount, capitalized interest, funding of deposits to the sinking fund reserve account, if necessary, and similar items. Further amending said ordinance, Bill Number One Nine Zero Four Three Two, to authorize the pledge for security and payment of some or all of the obligations and a lien and security interest in passenger facility charges to the extent available and authorizing certain other actions. And an ordinance constituting the twentieth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending the seventeenth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, Bill Number One Nine Zero Four Three Two of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, approved by the mayor on June twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, to authorize an increase in the aggregate principal amount of airport revenue bonds or notes to be issued under the seventeenth supplemental ordinance from three hundred and fifty million dollars to five hundred and fifty million dollars, exclusive of cost issuance, including underwriters discount, original issue discount, capitalized interest, funding of deposits to the sinking fund reserve account, if necessary, and similar items. Further amending said ordinance, Bill Number One Nine Zero Four Three Two, to authorize the pledge for security and payment of some or all of the obligations and a lien and security interest in passenger facility charges to the extent available and authorizing certain other actions. And an ordinance constituting the twentieth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending the seventeenth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, Bill Number One Nine Zero Four Three Two of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, approved by the mayor on June twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, to authorize an increase in the aggregate principal amount of airport revenue bonds or notes to be issued under the seventeenth supplemental ordinance from three hundred and fifty million dollars to five hundred and fifty million dollars, exclusive of cost issuance, including underwriters discount, original issue discount, capitalized interest, funding of deposits to the sinking fund reserve account, if necessary, and similar items. Further amending said ordinance, Bill Number One Nine Zero Four Three Two, to authorize the pledge for security and payment of some or all of the obligations and a lien and security interest in passenger facility charges to the extent available and authorizing certain other actions. And an ordinance constituting the twentieth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending the seventeenth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, Bill Number One Nine Zero Four Three Two of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, approved by the mayor on June twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, to authorize an increase in the aggregate principal amount of airport revenue bonds or notes to be issued under the seventeenth supplemental ordinance from three hundred and fifty million dollars to five hundred and fifty million dollars, exclusive of cost issuance, including underwriters discount, original issue discount, capitalized interest, funding of deposits to the sinking fund reserve account, if necessary, and similar items. Further amending said ordinance, Bill Number One Nine Zero Four Three Two, to authorize the pledge for security and payment of some or all of the obligations and a lien and security interest in passenger facility charges to the extent available and authorizing certain other actions. And an ordinance constituting the twentieth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending the seventeenth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, Bill Number One Nine Zero Four Three Two of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, approved by the mayor on June twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, to authorize an increase in the aggregate principal amount of airport revenue bonds or notes to be issued under the seventeenth supplemental ordinance from three hundred and fifty million dollars to five hundred and fifty million dollars, exclusive of cost issuance, including underwriters discount, original issue discount, capitalized interest, funding of deposits to the sinking fund reserve account, if necessary, and similar items. Further amending said ordinance, Bill Number One Nine Zero Four Three Two, to authorize the pledge for security and payment of some or all of the obligations and a lien and security interest in passenger facility charges to the extent available and authorizing certain other actions. And an ordinance constituting the twentieth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending the seventeenth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, Bill Number One Nine Zero Four Three Two of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, approved by the mayor on June twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, to authorize an increase in the aggregate principal amount of airport revenue bonds or notes to be issued under the seventeenth supplemental ordinance from three hundred and fifty million dollars to five hundred and fifty million dollars, exclusive of cost issuance, including underwriters discount, original issue discount, capitalized interest, funding of deposits to the sinking fund reserve account, if necessary, and similar items. Further amending said ordinance, Bill Number One Nine Zero Four Three Two, to authorize the pledge for security and payment of some or all of the obligations and a lien and security interest in passenger facility charges to the extent available and authorizing certain other actions. And an ordinance constituting the twentieth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending the seventeenth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, Bill Number One Nine Zero Four Three Two of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, approved by the mayor on June twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, to authorize an increase in the aggregate principal amount of airport revenue bonds or notes to be issued under the seventeenth supplemental ordinance from three hundred and fifty million dollars to five hundred and fifty million dollars, exclusive of cost issuance, including underwriters discount, original issue discount, capitalized interest, funding of deposits to the sinking fund reserve account, if necessary, and similar items. Further amending said ordinance, Bill Number One Nine Zero Four Three Two, to authorize the pledge for security and payment of some or all of the obligations and a lien and security interest in passenger facility charges to the extent available and authorizing certain other actions. And an ordinance constituting the twentieth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending the seventeenth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, Bill Number One Nine Zero Four Three Two of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, approved by the mayor on June twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, to authorize an increase in the aggregate principal amount of airport revenue bonds or notes to be issued under the seventeenth supplemental ordinance from from $350 million to $550 million, exclusive of cost issuance, including underwriters discount, original issue discount, capitalized interest, funding of deposits to the sinking fund reserve account, if necessary, and similar items. Further amending said ordinance, Bill Number 190432, to authorize the pledge for security and payment of some or all of the obligations and a lien and security interest in passenger facility charges, to the extent available, and authorizing certain other actions. And an ordinance constituting the 20th supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, authorizing the mayor, the city comptroller, and the city solicitor, or a majority of them, to issue and sell one or more series of subseries of tax-exempt or taxable airport revenue bonds or notes of the City of Philadelphia, setting forth the use of proceeds determining the sufficiency of pledged amounts available for debt service, covenating for the payment of interest and principal, authorizing the bond committee to take certain action with regard to the terms and conditions of the airport revenue bonds and notes related agreements and the elections under the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, authorizing the Director of Finance to take certain actions with regard to the sale of such airport revenue bonds or notes, the investment of proceeds thereof in the city's continuing disclosure obligation, and specifying the applicability of sections of the First Class City Revenue Bond Act and the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance. And an ordinance constituting the 16th supplemental ordinance to the General Gas Works Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1998, the 1998 general ordinance, authorizing the City of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, the city, to sell either at public or private sale, one or more series of gas works revenue bonds and gas work revenue bonds to refund such bonds, to pay the cost of certain capital projects and other project costs, and the cost of redeeming the city's gas works revenue capital project manager paper notes, authorizing the city to amend, novate, or terminate all or any portion of any qualified swap agreement, authorizing the city to obtain credit enhancement for any series of the bonds, making certain determinations and covenants relating to the gas works revenues, and payment of interest and principal, and authorizing covenants and actions in order that the bonds shall not be arbitrage bonds, all under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending, approving the amendment of fiscal year 2024 capital budget, providing for expenditures for capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith, subject to certain constraints and conditions, and acknowledging the receipt of the revised forecast of capital budgets for fiscal years 2025 through 2029 as amended. And I am pleased to advise you that on May 1st, 2024, I signed the following bills, which were passed by council at its session on April 18th, 2024. Bill numbers 240021, 240022, 240066, 240086, 240088, 240090, 240100, 240121, 240122, 240123, 240155, 240156, 240158, 240159, 240177, 240178, 240186, 240188, 240189, 240190, 240212, 240213, 240214, 240217, 240218, and 240219. There are no other communications in my possession, Council President.
Thank you very much. The messages will be printed in the journal. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I have two bills for introduction today. One introduction is with Councilmember O'Neill, and one is special to all of us, is signed and co-sponsored by all of us for the Dwight Evans Library renaming in West Oak Lane. So, proud.
Would a clerk please read the title of the bills?
An ordinance renaming and designating the property commonly referred to as West Oak Lane Library, located at 2,000 East Washington Lane, as the Dwight Evans Library of West Oak Lane in the City of Philadelphia.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Title IV of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Building Construction and Occupancy Code by amending Subcode PM, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, to add restrictions and remedies regarding encroaching trees under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer eight bills, seven on your behalf, one on my behalf.
Thank you. Would a clerk please read the title of the bills?
An ordinance constituting the 20th supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, authorizing the mayor, the city comptroller, and the city solicitor, or a majority of them, to issue and sell one or more series or subseries of tax-exempt or taxable airport revenue bonds or notes of the City of Philadelphia, setting forth the use of proceeds determining sufficiency of pledged amounts available for debt service, covenating for the payment of interest and principal, authorizing the bond committee to take such, to take certain action with regard to the terms and conditions of the airport revenue bonds or notes and related agreements and other elections under the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, authorizing the Director of Finance to take certain actions with regard to the sale of such airport revenue bonds or notes, the investment of proceeds thereof in the city's continuing disclosure obligation, and specifying the applicability of sections of the First Class City Revenue Bond Act and amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance. And an ordinance constituting the 16th supplemental ordinance to the General Gas Works Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1998, authorizing the City of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, to sell either at public or private sale, one or more series of gas works revenue bonds and gas works revenue bonds to refund such bonds, to pay the cost of certain capital projects and other project costs, and the cost of redeeming the city's gas works revenue capital project commercial paper notes, authorizing the city to amend, novate, or terminate all or any portion of any qualified swap agreement, authorizing the city to obtain credit enhancement for any series of the bonds, making certain determinations and covenants relating to gas works revenues, and the payment of interest and principal, and authorizing covenants and actions in order that the bonds shall not be arbitrage bonds, all under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending the 17th supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, Bill Number 190432, of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, approved by the mayor on June 26, 2019, to authorize an increase in the aggregate principal amount of airport revenue bonds or notes to be issued under the 17th supplemental ordinance from $350 million to $500 million, exclusive of cost issuance, including underwriters discount, original issue discount, capitalized interest, funding of deposits to the sinking fund reserve account, if necessary, and similar items. Further amending said ordinance, Bill Number 190432, to authorize the pledge for security and payment of some or all of the obligations and a lien and security interest in passenger facility charges, to the extent available, and authorizing certain other actions. And an ordinance authorizing the city treasurer on behalf of the city to enter into an amendment agreement with Citizens National Bank Association for provision of payroll banking services to the city, under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance constituting the 19th supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, providing for certain amendments to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance, under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance authorizing an increase in the non-electoral indebtedness of the city within the Pennsylvania constitutional limit, authorizing the bond committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale, to provide funds towards various capital municipal services, providing for appropriations to the sinking fund commission for the payment of such bonds, and authorizing agreements to provide credit or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds in connection with the issuance of bonds and certain other actions, and rescinding the authorization set forth in Bill Number 230186-A, approved September 15th, 2023. And an ordinance approving the amendment to the fiscal year 2024 capital budget for providing expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith, subject to certain constraints and conditions, and acknowledging the receipt of the revised forecast of capital budgets for fiscal years 2025 through 2029 as amended. And an ordinance amending Title 17 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Contracts and Procurement to Modify the Requirements for Contracts with Not-for-Profit Vendors, all under certain terms and conditions.
The following eight bills read will be referred to the appropriate committee. Counsel for brief session will be at ease to acknowledge the presence of Masonic Brother State Senator Sharif Street. Thank you for joining us today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardiere.
Thank you, Council President. Today I have one bill and six non-privileged resolutions, five of them on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Would a clerk please read the title of the bill and resolutions?
An ordinance amending Section 9-213 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Farmers Markets by adding a permissible location on South 52nd Street between Pine Street and Osage Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a resolution also naming the 4,100 block of Parkside Avenue as Reverend Dr. Arthur White Way to honor the life and memory of Reverend Dr. Arthur R. White and his service to the East Side Park community.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council.
And a resolution appointing Jennifer Greenberg to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Land Bank.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing Nicholas Dima to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Land Bank.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council. Counsel will be at ease for a second. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. I have three resolutions.
Thank you very much. Would a clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs to hold hearings on ensuring recreation centers have the full, complete complement of staff needed to respond to the diverse challenges of Philadelphia neighborhoods.
The resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings on exploring possible alternatives to Philadelphia's current school board governance model.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution proclaiming the week of May 3rd, 2024, to May 11th, 2024, as the 14th Annual Philly Tech Week, and honoring the broad and vibrant Philadelphia technology community.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer two bills, one on Member Jeffrey Young's behalf.
Would a clerk please read the title of the bills?
An ordinance authorizing the installation, ownership, and maintenance of various encroachments in the vicinity of 4432 Main Street, 4436-42 Main Street, and 4436R Main Street, Philadelphia, PA 19127, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 14-104 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Non-Confirming Structures and Uses by Providing Further Provisions on Changes from Non-Confirming Uses, All Under Certain Terms and Conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau.
Good morning, Council President. Colleagues, I have one privileged resolution.
Would a clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution congratulating Temple University's mascot, The Owl, on winning the Philadelphia Inquirer's first-ever mascot bracket.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Ketsi Lizada.
Good morning, Council President. Today I offer one bill on your behalf, one privileged resolution, co-introduced with Members Jones, Driscoll, Schueller, Ahmad, and Harity, and one privileged resolution co-introduced with Councilmember Phillips.
Thank you. Would a clerk please read the title of the bill and resolutions?
An ordinance authorizing that the city's chief innovation officer or their designee to enter into a cable television franchise renewal agreement with Verizon Pennsylvania LLC, renewing the cable television franchise grant to the city to Verizon effective August 25, 2024, for franchise areas 1, 2, 3, and 4 of the city, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution requesting the city comptroller to conduct a performance audit on all allocations and funding distributed by the city in the Kensington area, and examine the policies and procedures of the recipients and their impact on the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council.
And a privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of Alfredo B. Calderon Santini, Executive Director of ASPIDA, Inc. of Pennsylvania, for his lifelong commitment to advancing quality education for every child in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Good morning, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions to introduce today.
Thank you. Would a clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution declaring May 2024 to be Hepatitis Awareness Month in Philadelphia to recognize and support the joint efforts of HEBBY United, Philadelphia, and HEPSEA Allies of Philadelphia, coalitions aimed at raising awareness of the link between viral hepatitis and liver cancer, and the importance of elimination activities.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing May as Teacher Appreciation Month, May 6 through the 10th as Teacher Appreciation Week, and May 7th as Teacher Appreciation Day in the City of Philadelphia, and honoring teachers across the city for their vital work to uplift, care, care for, and educate young people.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
I have nothing today, Council President.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution to introduce on your behalf.
Would a clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution declaring May 2nd, 2024, to be Prince Hall Day in the City of Philadelphia, and honoring the outstanding civic and philanthropic contributions of the Prince Hall Grand Lodge of Pennsylvania throughout Philadelphia and across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Good morning, Mr. President. Councilman Harity and I offer one privileged resolution, and I offer one resolution, non-privileged.
Would a clerk please read the title of the privileged and non-privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution celebrating the students and staff of Lincoln High School for their service in the 2024 primary election.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution adding Gregory "Castrati" Scenderbaugh Way to the signs, to the street signs on Willets Road between Holm Avenue and Academy Road in recognition of the new Albanian Community Center being constructed at 3322 Willets Road by the Philadelphia Albanian American Chapter of Bijai E. Skypes.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Schueller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer three bills and one non-privileged resolution.
Would a clerk please read the title of the bills and the resolution?
A resolution, a non-privileged resolution initiating action to a neighborhood improvement district known as the East Pashyunk Avenue Business Improvement District.
This bill will refer to the appropriate committee. Would a clerk please read the title of the next bill?
An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of 944 North Second Street, Philadelphia, PA 19123, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Snyder Avenue, 6th Street, Cantrell Street, and 7th Street.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance continuing a neighborhood improvement district known as the East Pashyunk Avenue Business Improvement District in an area that generally includes both sides of East Pashyunk Avenue, from the south side of Federal Street to the east side of South Broad Street, certain blocks of that street that intersect that portion of East Pashyunk Avenue, both sides of Broad Street, from the north side of McKean Street to the north side of Snyder Avenue, and the west side of South Broad Street from the south side of Mifflin Street to the north side of McKean Street, designating East Pashyunk Avenue Business Improvement District Incorporated, which has organized itself as a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district, approving a plan for the district, including a list of Approving a plan for the district, including a list of proposed improvements and their estimated cost, and providing for the assessment fees to be levied on property owners within the district, authorizing the Director of Commerce on behalf of the city to execute an agreement with the East Pashyunk Avenue Business Improvement District relating to the district, and authorizing the East Pashyunk Avenue Business Improvement District, Inc., to assess property owners within the district, a special property assessment fee to be used in accordance with the approved plan, all in accordance with the provisions of the Community and Economic Improvement Act, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one non-privileged resolution.
Would a clerk please read the title of the non-privileged resolution?
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fees simple title to fifteen thirty-two West Loudoun Street in the Eighth Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fees simple title to such properties pursuant to section sixteen dash four oh five of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions, one co-introduced with Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Would a clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution recognizing and congratulating the Central High School RoboLancers, winners of the twenty twenty-four First Robotics Championship.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing May twenty twenty-four as American Stroke Month in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The next order of business is reports from committees. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports out five bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Would a chief clerk please, the title, please read the report?
To the President and members of the Council of City Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules, to which was referred bill number two four zero one nine two, entitled "An Ordinance Approving the Fifth Amendment of the Redevelopment Proposal for the Tioga Urban Renewal Area," being the area generally bounded by Hunting Park Avenue on the north, Broad Street, Germantown Avenue, Vanango Street, Fifteenth Street, Allegheny Avenue, and Germantown Avenue to the east, Glenwood Avenue and Lehigh Avenue to the south, and Twenty-third Street, Allegheny Avenue and Twenty-second Street on the west, including the Fifth Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan, which provides for changes that would make it consistent with the Tioga Redevelopment Area Plan and generally consistent with the most recent comprehensive plan approved by the City Planning Commission of the city of Philadelphia, respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. And an ordinance, and bill number two four zero two one five, entitled "An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Allegheny Avenue, American Street, Lippincott Street, Second Street, Gurnee Street, Indiana Avenue, Third Street, Gurnee Street, Clearfield Street, and Fifth Street," respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. And bill number two four zero two one six, entitled "An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Somerset Street, Orkney Street, Cumberland Street, and Fifth Street," respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. And bill number two four zero two four four, entitled "An Ordinance Amending Section fourteen dash five two nine of the Philadelphia Code," entitled VDO Fifth District Overlay District, by removing the exemption from the landscaping standards in the zoning code, all under certain terms and conditions, respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. And bill number two four zero two four seven, entitled "An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designation of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Kensington Avenue, Buckingham Street, Frankfurt Avenue, and Tioga Street," respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bills that were just read into the record by the chief clerk.
It has been moved and property seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of the bills just read by the chief clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. Bills number two four zero one nine two, two four zero two one five, two four zero two one six, two four zero two four four, and two four zero two four seven will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Now, we will, the next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of rules have been deemed to have been read for a first reading. These bills will be placed on a second reading and final passage calendar for the next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on a second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers two four zero three three seven, two four zero three three eight, two four zero three three nine, two four zero three four four, two four zero three five zero, two four zero three five one, two four zero three five two, two four zero three five three, two four zero three five four, two four zero three five five, and two four zero 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 three.
Thank you. Before considering these bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so by giving your name to Ms. Hassan at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have signed up, you will be called in the order in which your name appears on the sign-up sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commentators each will have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. Today, the time limit will be two minutes. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the two-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium. When there are thirty seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once two minutes have passed, the light will turn red, and a sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not already done so. I already reserved the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same matter. I would now ask the chief clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
Kazan Collin for Brooks Resolution about Hepatitis. Can Paul Elia, Paul Birdsong, and Joseph Bo Biden also make their way to the podium?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Kazan Collin. I am the Health Program Manager of Philadelphia Chinatown Development Corporation, or PCDC. I am here to represent my organization and the Chinatown community that we serve in voicing our support of Councilmembers Brooks' privileged resolution honoring Hepatitis Awareness Month. HEBP is a disease that continues to disproportionately affect Asian Americans, and that Asian Pacific Islanders make up fifty percent of the HEBP infection burden in the nation and have liver cancer rates up to thirteen times higher than Caucasians. Awareness is key. We can't just plop a vaccine clinic or a hepatitis screening ban in the middle of Chinatown without awareness and education that is, one, culturally appropriate and, two, linguistically accessible. This is especially true in the Chinese and the greater Asian community that we serve daily at PCDC. In our community, there is stigma attached to the disease, generations of misguided beliefs, and lack of education of how this disease is transmitted, and you double that with similar beliefs to screening, and you build barriers, barriers that make screening and HEBP vaccinations for AAPIs that much more inaccessible. However, what we found successful was utilizing the trust that our organization has in our community, leveraging our partnerships with partners such as the HEBP Foundation. In the past year, we were able to screen community members for hepatitis B, conduct storytelling workshops by inviting community members with the lived HEBP experience to share their stories and inspire their neighbors. And this is why I'm here, so our community members who were screened, who made the effort to participate in our awareness campaigns from our kids and families, in our Healthy Livering, Healthy Color Contest for a Healthy Liver, and our storytelling participants such as Ms. Lynn and her family, to see a tangible impact of the work in our collaboration with them in the past year. By having a dedicated month to HEBP awareness, this makes their personal efforts to get screened and to learn more about this disease that much more significant. This is constant work. This Hepatitis Awareness Month, this acknowledgement to this disease to the council helps us truly realize that our health equity work means something to the community that we serve, and lets our community members know that their efforts to improve their wellness is courageous in itself. Thank you.
Paul Elia, Paul Birdsong, Joseph Bo Biden, and Hillary Langer also make their way to the podium.
So, I noticed these bills, these resolutions, two four zero, let me make it bigger, two four zero three four four, urging the Biden administration to immediately release the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's affirmatively furthering fair housing rule. The three five zero, authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying, I'm not going to read the whole thing, two four zero three five one, authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to Philadelphia Redeveloping Authority deeds conveying fees simple title to fifteen thirty-two. I'm not going to read the whole thing. My question is, my question to City Council, I saw that little speech the mayor did pertaining to y'all. How you feel about that? Because I feel like all Janey Thompson, or Lauren Janello, or Angela Elia, or Michael Miller are more important than all of this other stuff that we keep talking about. We talking about deeds, we talking about redeveloping, but you still got all of these homicides that are unsolved. You still got all these people being killed every day out here. We get these buildings and we redevelop them, and we move new people from out of town into them, and we bring businesses here, and they get shot up, and their kids are getting killed. What good did that do to the city? You see that silence? All them people that are getting killed here are silent just like that. We're talking about nonsense that means nothing. And I speak on behalf of the people of Philadelphia. We don't care about the deeds. We don't care about the redeveloping. We care about our children and whether they're safe walking down the street. We care about whether or not these homicides get solved and these mothers get closure. All power to the people.
Joseph Bo Biden, Hillary Langer, Sari Young, and Jenna Collins make their way to the podium, please. Jake Zychik, Jeremy Blattstein, make your way to the podium, please.
Good morning, Members of City Council. Thank you for giving Community Legal Services the opportunity to speak today on something as important as HUD's proposed affirmatively furthering fair housing rule. My name is Jenna Collins. I'm the Director of Supervision and Professional Development and a housing attorney at Community Legal Services. I have over a decade of experience as a housing advocate and have represented maybe thousands of Philadelphians in housing matters over the course of my career. As an organization, CLS has over fifty years of experience representing clients in their efforts to provide safe, affordable, and stable housing for their families. It is because of our vast experience advocating around housing issues for Philadelphia's most vulnerable citizens that CLS and I are in firm support of Councilmember Landau's resolution urging the Biden administration to immediately release the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's affirmatively furthering fair housing rule. As Councilmember Landau lays out in her resolution, the proposed rule would further build on HUD's twenty fifteen rule, which formalized HUD's mandate under the Fair Housing Act that HUD or any other entity that receives federal funding must use their funding to redress inequities in the housing system. In enacting Title Seven of the Civil Rights Act, Congress recognized that where a family lives, where it is allowed to live, is inextricably bound up with better education, better jobs, economic motivation, and good living conditions. According to one study using twenty twenty U.S. Census data, Philadelphia remained the eleventh most segregated city in the country. While Philadelphia is an incredibly diverse city with a majority-minority population, its neighborhoods remain incredibly segregated, with its black and brown residents often pushed to the poorest areas of the city, with the least city resources and the least amount of safe, habitable housing stock. This is why the release of this rule is so integral to Philadelphia and the community's ongoing work around the affordable housing crisis and our commitment to creating the best lives we can for our city's most vulnerable population. It is no coincidence that the vast majority of the clients who seek CLS's assistance in achieving housing stability through both the rental market and homeownership are black women and children. Release of this rule not only supports the work that Philadelphia and CLS are doing, but is a step closer to realizing the dream of the Fair Housing Act to provide fair housing throughout the United States. Thank you.
Jake Zychik, Jeremy Blattstein, and Eric Williams.
Good morning, all. My name is Jake Zychik. I am the Community Advocacy Director with the American Heart Association and American Stroke Association. This morning, I would like to thank Councilmember Ahmad and all of City Council for the resolution recognizing May as Stroke Month. So, thank you all. One in four adults globally over the age of twenty-five are impacted by stroke, and one of the more preventable causes of stroke is high blood pressure. More than one-third of individual adults in Philadelphia are impacted by high blood pressure, and there's a lot that we can do. Here at the American Heart Association slash American Stroke Association, we have been working very closely with our clinical and community partners to implement target blood pressure programs and also provide self-monitor blood pressure cuffs and other initiatives to really address blood pressure and stroke. So, this American Stroke Month this May, I really wanted to just highlight two aspects and really two campaigns that we are working on. First is FAST, F-A-S-T, and those are the warning signs of stroke. They are face drooping, arm weakness, speech difficulty, and then that is time to call nine one one. So, that is the FAST warning signs, and we do have resources that we can provide with all City Council offices and with the city and administration around that. Last year, we provided and really launched our Spanish-speaking initiative, RAPIDO. So, if you'd like those resources also, it's very similar to FAST but for our Spanish-speaking population. Once again, as always, I just wanted to say to everyone in City Council at the American Heart Association/Stroke Association to please utilize us as a resource and leverage our research and science and evidence-based initiatives to really address health equity and cardiovascular health in the city of Philadelphia. Once again, thank you to Councilmember Ahmad and everyone in City Council for recognizing May as Stroke Month. Have a great one.
Eric Williams, Felix Galdiner, and Obona Haggins.
Hello, Philadelphia City Council. My name's Jeremy Blattstein. I'm talking in support of bill two four zero three four four, HUD Fair Housing. You just heard statements made about equity and affordable housing across Philadelphia, but every day in that limit where density can be built in Philadelphia, every restrictive zoning overlay forces the housing demand to be pushed out to the fringe. It started with the Society Hill overlay, and it's went from there. It was one overlay after the next. You look at Gerard Avenue, you limit the density that you can build on Gerard Avenue. Where then is the houses that are going to be built, being built in those communities that don't have a voice? So, it's really important when you talk about gentrification to recognize where gentrification starts. Gentrification starts in those areas where people want to live but can't afford it, and it starts in Society Hill, it starts in Rin House. Those are the areas that they have voices, they have lawyers that are able to limit what is being able to be developed. You're seeing it right now with the Bus Depot right now. It's a bus garage. That should be a great place to have, but you'll see Society Hill will pay lawyers to try to prevent that. So, as we've moved forward to talk about affordable housing, it's very important to really look at where we're putting density along our transit quarters so that we can allow the neighborhoods that have the resources to have the affordable housing being built. And the last thing I will say is encouraging passing of the ten-year tax exemption for affordable housing. That's already been built, passed on the state level, and it's for thirty percent of the units at six percent AMI for a full ten-year tax payment, and it will go a long way for changing affordable housing in Philadelphia. Thank you. Thank you.
Eric Williams, may Felix Skaldner, Obona Hagens, and Warren Bloom also make their way to the podium.
Good morning, President and city council again. I failed to recognize, I want all Prince Hall Masons to please stand and take a bow. One point I wanted to make, Reverend Prince Hall did so much with so little resources. Fast forward to today, we have the resources and people in high places, but are we putting forth the effort? So, just let's think about that. We appreciate you, we appreciate the recognition, and we're here to serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Felix Skaldner, Obona Hagens, Warren Bloom, and Kate Perez also make your way to the podium.
All things being said by our grand senior warden, Eric Williams, I just wanted to invite, we actually have a museum up at 4301 North Broad Street and would like to invite all members to come and see our museum. And you can go through 240 years of history just by walking in our little small museum. And we have that much history in that little room. So, that's my invitation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great morning, everyone. It's your unseated council member, Obona Hagens. I'm speaking about this bill about changing the names. Names and words are very important in conveying messages and meanings. Imagine if the name change said Papa as opposed to Mama. It would give the impression that she was a man. The same holds true when referring to persons of emancipated ancestry. We're not black, we're not African-American. As a matter of fact, after our ancestors were freed during Reconstruction, we were called American freedmen. So, from this day forward, all media has to cease and desist referring to me, the descendants of slavery, as black. Read what Blacks Law Dictionary says about black, right? We're not black people, we are a distinct group. In Nigeria, you have the Yoruba, you have the Hausa, and you have the Igbo. They are all distinct in their groups even though they're from Nigeria. So, what I'm saying essentially, today is the last day to refer to descendants of slavery as black or African-American. You don't want to defame who I am. And it actually is a negative effect to emancipation because it's kind of negating the fact that I was emancipated by not referring to me by my proper status as an American freedman. I'm the only people, my descendants are the only people who were emancipated in this country. So, you have immigrants that come in, they're naturalized citizens. The emancipated citizens have different rights. And I'm going to be honest with all of you sitting down here, you don't know the rights of the American freedmen. You don't. And it's impossible to adequately represent the American freedmen without knowing what their rights are. So, I implore you, stop using black, stop using African-American, I am an American freedman. All the forms throughout the city has to change to reflect who we are. Obona Hagens, your unseated council member, over and out.
Warren Bloom, and then Kate Perez.
Good morning, Council President Johnson and the members of council. I'm here to say, I'm here to support the passion of people like Obona Hagens, some of the gentlemen who spoke out. I just want to say, I'm glad to be here today, but I'm going to let everybody know that I'm going to be more active, Councilman Jones, in coming down and helping with this legislative process to encourage all of our members of council that my main passion will be the structural racism and to protect our future. And our future is our youth, our young people in this city. So, thank you for the good work you're doing. I'm looking forward to being more participant down here in council. And all of you stay encouraged. Thank you very much, and everybody have a nice weekend.
Kate Perez.
We're here again to beg the president to do something to actually help the American people. A few weeks ago, we were here to ask the government to fund the Affordable Connectivity Program that served more than 20 million Americans. And now, the program is ending because the government doesn't have any money. This comes right after the government decided to ignore its constituents and give $26 billion to Israel. This rule aims to help our citizens in concentrated poverty. And in the U.S., we have over 14 million people in concentrated poverty. Ending homelessness here would cost anywhere from 11 to 30 billion a year. Again, $26 billion to Israel. Today, we're calling Biden to protect against discrimination, against protected groups, kind of like how only certain religions are allowed to buy land in occupied territories of Palestine and the West Bank. The rule would also use federal funding to transform areas where protected groups lived back into thriving communities. How much money do we think it would take to clear rubble, extract bodies, detoxify the soil, rebuild the sewage system, rebuild water filtration? This rule would also improve community education and build up their health system, a health system that doesn't exist in Palestine anymore. There's no hospitals left. They claim Nassar was hiding Hamas, and after weeks, they could not find one Hamas member. And the only thing they left behind was a mass grave with 300 people buried, some in zip ties, medics in scrubs, patients in catheters, people buried alive. The Columbia University has made itself a stain on our country by inviting NYPD to brutalize their students and lock journalists in a building, while Columbia, the country, has been a shining light in how to deal with genocide. By cutting off arms sales and dissolving all relations with the state of Israel, Colombian President Gustavo Pedro says, "If Palestine dies, humanity dies, and we will not let it die." With one child murdered every 10 minutes, how many more Palestinians will be alive before next council? How many more until you call for a ceasefire?
Council President, there are no other names for public comment.
That concludes today's public comment period. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading of final passage calendar. Would a clerk please read the title of resolution number 240337?
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 4419R Market Street and 4310R Haverford Avenue in the 3rd Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia and further authorizing the Philadelphia redevelopment authority to transfer to the Philadelphia land bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Garderere for motion regarding resolution number 240337.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving property second, the resolution number 240337 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of resolution number 240338?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia land bank to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia housing authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 4419R Market Street and 4310R Haverford Avenue in the 3rd Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Garderere for motion regarding resolution number 240338.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving property second, the resolution number 240338 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of resolution number 240339?
A resolution also naming the 1100 block of South 53rd Street as Mama Nia Bay Al Rasul Way to honor the life and cultural contributions of Mama Nia Bay Al Sul Ray to the city of Philadelphia.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Garderere for motion regarding resolution number 240339.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving property second, the resolution number 240339 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of resolution number 240344?
A resolution urging the Biden administration to immediately release to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's affirmatively furthering fair housing rule.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Landau for motion regarding resolution number 240344.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving property second, the resolution number 240344 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of resolution number 240350?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia redevelopment authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia land bank deeds conveying title to various properties located in the 8th Councilmatic District, including on the following streets: Mechanic Street, Musgrave Street, East Phil Elena Street, East Sharp Neck Street, East Ashmead Street pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for motion regarding resolution number 240350.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving property second, the resolution number 240350 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of resolution number 240351?
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 1532 West Loudon Street in the 8th Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia and further authorizing the Philadelphia redevelopment authority to transfer to the Philadelphia land bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for motion regarding resolution number 240351.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that resolution number 240351 be withdrawn.
It has been moving property second, the resolution number 240351 be withdrawn. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, and resolution number 240351 has been withdrawn. Would a clerk please read the title of resolution number 240352?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia land bank to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia housing authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 6657-59 Blakemore Street, including the former 530-34 Vernon Road, 50, 56, 60-74, and 101 Column Street, 6783, 85, 87 Church Lane, 4547, 51 East Garfield Street, 5417, 5423-27, 5429-43, 5513, 5515 Lena Street, 4949, 4951, 6526, and 6534 Germantown Avenue, 117 Mannheim Street, 36, 38, 40, 42, 44, 46, and 63 East Worcester Street in the 8th Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for motion regarding resolution number 240352.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving property second, the resolution number 240352 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of resolution number 240353?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia redevelopment authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia land bank deeds conveying title to various properties located in the 8th Councilmatic District, including on the following streets: Mechanic Street, Musgrave Street, East Phil Elena Street, East Sharp Neck Street, East Ashmead Street pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for motion regarding resolution number 240353.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the resolution number 240353 be withdrawn.
It has been moving property second, the resolution number 240353 be withdrawn. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, and resolution number 240353 has been withdrawn. Would a clerk please read the title of resolution number 240354?
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 49 East Earlham Street, 207 East Penn Street, 313 East Bringer Street, 292, 278, 260, 226 East Bringer Street, 5222 Wakefield Street, 429 East Ashmead Street, 5514, 5515 Morton Street, 5608 High School Street, 5642 Morton Street, 53 East Pastoria Street, 261 East Sharp Neck Street, 263 East Sharp Neck Street, 112 East Springer Street, 111 East Springer Street, 4925 Wakefield Street, 326 and 342 Shidaker Street, 4951 Sheldon Street, 4957, 4961, 4975 Sheldon Street, 4635 Germantown Avenue, 44 and 42 Rieger Street, 4946 Kaiser Street, 1532 West Loudon Street in the 8th Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia redevelopment authority to transfer to the Philadelphia land bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for motion regarding resolution number 240354.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving property second, the resolution number 240354 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of resolution number 240355?
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 5803 Knox Street in the 8th Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia and further authorizing the Philadelphia redevelopment authority to transfer to the Philadelphia land bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to section 14-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for motion regarding resolution number 240355.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the resolution number 240355 be withdrawn.
It has been moving property second, the resolution number 240355 be withdrawn. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, and resolution number 240355 has been withdrawn. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number 240003?
An ordinance authorizing the commissioner of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to enter into a multi-year agreement with Bennett Compost, Inc. for food scrap collection and management of a compost facility on city property located at 5650 Rising Sun Avenue under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Druskal.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are 15, the nays are 0. Majority of all members of council having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Thomas authorizing the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs to hold hearings on ensuring recreation centers have the full complement of staff needed to respond to the diverse challenges of Philadelphian neighborhoods.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips for motion on the resolution.
Oh, Thomas.
Thomas. The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. We're getting ready for the summer early. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving property second, the resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Thomas authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings on exploring possible alternatives to Philadelphia's current school board governance model.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council President. I look, uh, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. The chair recognizes Councilmember Ketsey Lazada.
Mr. President, I vote yes on any.
Vote aye on all bills since you stepped out. Okay, thank you. Duly noted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
And a privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Thomas proclaiming the week of May third through May eleventh, twenty twenty-four as the Fourteenth Annual Philly Tech Week and honoring the broad and vibrant Philadelphia technology community.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I want to start by thanking my colleague, Councilmember Rue Landau, for co-introducing the resolution with me and continuing the advocacy. And I want to just remind everybody to join us May third from four to seven P.M. as we kick off the Fourteenth Annual Philly Tech Week, which will also be a block party that'll take place at thirty-seven oh one Philbrook Street. So with that being said, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Landau congratulating Temple University's mascot, The Owl, on winning the Philadelphia Inquirer's first ever mascot bracket.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Landau for a motion on the resolution.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution. Thank you.
It has been moving property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
A privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Lazada honoring the life and legacy of Alfredo B. Calderon Santini, Executive Director of ASPIDA, Inc. of Pennsylvania for his lifelong commitment to advancing quality education for every child in the City of Philadelphia.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Lazada for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Brooks declaring May twenty twenty-four to be Hepatitis Awareness Month in Philadelphia to recognize and support the joint efforts of Hep B United Philadelphia and Hepatitis C Allies of Philadelphia, coalitions aimed at raising awareness of the link between viral hepatitis and liver cancer and the importance of elimination activities.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It has been moving property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Brooks recognizing May as Teacher Appreciation Month, May sixth through tenth as Teacher Appreciation Week, and May seventh as Teacher Appreciation Day in the City of Philadelphia, and honoring teachers across the city for their vital work to uplift care for and educate young people.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember O'Rourke on behalf of Council President Johnson declaring May second, twenty twenty-four to be Prince Hall Day in the City of Philadelphia, and honoring the outstanding civic and philanthropic contributions of the Prince Hall Grand Lodge of Pennsylvania throughout Philadelphia and across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke for a motion on the resolution.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
A privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Driscoll celebrating the students and staff of Lincoln High School for their service in the twenty twenty-four primary election.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll for a motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution, Mr. President.
It has been moving property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Ahmad recognizing and congratulating the Central High School Robo-Lancers, winners of the twenty twenty-four First Robotics Championship.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ma for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to thank my co-introducer, Councilmember Isaiah Thomas, and I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It has been moving property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a privileged resolution recognizing May twenty twenty-four as American Stroke Month in the City of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Ahmad.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Ahmad.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It has been moving property second that the resolution is adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
Council President, there are no other resolutions in my possession.
That completes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? The chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I'm introducing resolutions to declare May as both Teacher Appreciation Month and Hepatitis Awareness Month in the City of Philadelphia. Our teachers need and deserve more than appreciation. They need and deserve safe and modern school buildings to work in, adequate resources for their students, and fully-staffed school communities, including nurses, social workers, paraprofessionals, and tutors who can provide one-on-one support for the students who need it. Every day, I speak with educators who are making do with less and less. Nearly one in three Philadelphia teachers choose to leave the profession between twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. And many more are also leaving. They are leaving not because they don't care, but because they don't, or because they don't love and believe in our children, but out of sheer exhaustion. And when we lose our teachers, it opens an enormous gap in our ability to engage and educate our young people. So, this month, this year, and years to come, our commitment to our educators must extend beyond appreciation, but to the real work of transforming our schools into places of joy and healing for educators, students, families, and communities. As we begin Hepatitis Awareness Month, I want to commend two organizations, Hepatitis C Allies of Philadelphia and Hep B United Philadelphia, who have been working for years to end these devastating illnesses. These viruses are the leading causes of liver cancer and now kill, and they kill now more than HIV and AIDS. More than fifty thousand Philadelphians are living with this virus, with these viruses, and a majority of the people are not aware that they are affected. One of the primary ways that these viruses spread is through shared needles. With the dynamic, with the dramatic loss of funding for safe needle exchange in Philadelphia, it will be, become even more difficult to combat Hep B and C in our city. Unless we are ready to use all of, use all the evidence-based tools at our disposal, Philadelphians will continue to suffer from these preventable, curable diseases. We now have a cure for Hepatitis C, which is a monumental accomplishment. But we will not fully eradicate these illnesses without raising awareness, increasing access to affordable health care, and investing in preventive strategies that are proven to save lives. Thank you so much, Council President.
You're welcome. The chair recognizes Councilmember Nick O'Rourke.
Thank you, Council President. So much has been said and has happened and transpired today in the way of acknowledging a number of Black society's institutional life, whether it be through the acknowledgement of the Boule that were present today, as well as the most worshipful Prince Hall Grand Lodge of Pennsylvania and the brothers of the Prince Hall Grand Lodge thereof. I'm struck, because Reverend Bonnie came up to me prior to the beginning of the session and asked a few questions about everybody so well dressed and all of that, but also mentioned in passing, clergy to clergy, that today is also National or International Day of Prayer. Reminded, and the brothers here gathered would also recall that the Lord actually visited, and in the Hebrew Bible suggests that the Lord visited Solomon, actually, I think it's the First Kings three, visited Solomon and asked him, what do you acquire or require of me? What do you want? And Solomon says back that with all these great people that he has to, has to lead, he asks for wisdom to be able to, 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 to govern these great people. In fact, he says, "Give your servant, therefore, an understanding mind to govern your people, able to discern between good and evil, for who can govern this great people of yours?" And I think that's apropos for all of my colleagues here gathered as we are in the midst of tumultuous times internationally, nationally, domestically, all of that. And so, as we are doing the people's business, let's take a note from this National Day of Prayer and seek the face of that which is important to us, that we might be good legislators and good servants of the people in our time here. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Very well said. The chair recognizes, and speeches on behalf of the majority, the chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Thank you, Council President Johnson. And council colleagues, good, good afternoon. Today is a moment of both immense pride and personal privilege for me. On this day, I am afforded a singular honor. Today, we honor someone worthy of great note over many decades. I was pleased to introduce a legislation to rename the West Oak Lane Library in the neighborhood of West Oak Lane after Congressman Dwight Evans, someone who has inspired, encouraged, and led by example. He's a friend to all, a source of wise and sage counsel, and one who has labored for decades in the vineyards of public service. Dwight Evans has been an unmatched voice in education reform, community revitalization, and a visionary in conceiving and building holistic development models. When education in our communities failed, then State Representative Dwight Evans innovated and led efforts to create West Oak Lane Charter School, transcending both party and ideology. Representative Evans offers us a vision and divided times on how to work together, as he would say, to transform ideas and policies that are normally ahead of their proverbial times. When urban blight, disinvestment, and post-industrial decay became national problems, Dwight Evans created ennobling models that featured jazz music known as the Jazz Festival in West Oak Lane. The arts, local talent, and well-known global names came to West Oak Lane to show the potential and vitality of our own creativity and artistry. He possessed an oversized ability to show us how beautiful life could be. Old God's Avenue was transformed into a global stage, and we were all persuaded that where we lived was as beautiful and substantial as any stage anywhere in the world. While resurrecting the physical real estate of West Oak Lane, he was at the same time building people in the possibility of their best lives. The first African-American chair of the Pennsylvania House Appropriations Committee, he is an inspiration to our current chair, Representative Jordan Harris. From my generation, Congressman Evans is a living giant, a walking, breathing inspiration from a bygone era of genteel and encouraging leaders who inspire and encourage us by their example and integrity. His tenor and tone and temper are such that all of us could and should adopt as we interact with one another, as we remind ourselves that we are doing the people's business and not our own business. On a personal note, Congressman Dwight Evans has meant the world to me as a public figure. I remember in high school wearing Dwight Evans buttons, shirts, often saying, "When you think about block-by-block transformation, you should think about a man named Dwight Evans." And if we want to think about public servants, I always said, "Think about Dwight Evans." I went to a conservative high school. That didn't ring a bell with them. But I was willing to always talk about this man who I barely knew, someone I just studied. It was several weeks ago when I was driving through West Oak Lane. I was sitting in my car and I said, "Wow, how did I get here? I didn't imagine this, didn't desire it, but I'm here." And I said, "You know what? That legacy of Dwight Evans has to continue in the Northwest community." And I said, "A lot of us are getting older, and that Generation Z is also coming up, and I want them to remember the history of people who've paved the way." And that is why I was excited to think of this idea that will help our community remember and also live the legacy of Dwight Evans. And just to find out, in several, in a couple of weeks, he will be celebrating his seventieth birthday. So every member of this body can go on a nauseum about Dwight Evans as a friend, colleague, mentor, patron, and exemplar. There will be no end to the plaudits, which are so richly deserved because they have been so justly earned. And because of his example, I'm pleased to offer this bill, which recognizes Congressman Evans' work at so many levels by renaming the West Oak Lane Library the Dwight Evans Library of West Oak Lane and honor his living and lasting accomplishments in the community, the State House, and United States Congress. I'm grateful to all seventeen members of council have co-sponsored this legislation, and I look forward to the day that we celebrate him for all of his incredible work for our City of Philadelphia. Thank you.
You're welcome. Rightfully, rightfully deserved. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilman Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, uh, want to thank you for the appointment regarding the work that is to be done with the Kensington Caucus. The price we pay for the space we occupy is service. Service. And I was asked last night, "Well, you don't represent Kensington." And I had to correct them and say, "Yes, I do." Because until Kensington is safe, no neighborhood in the City of Philadelphia, Mr. President, is safe. It is symbolized today that we have wonderful young people come down from Roxborough, and I was informed by Member Thomas of two potential ODs from the same school. Now, that's not a commonly known kind of dirty secret that this opioid crisis is everywhere. And it spreads. The gravity of Kensington then exports it out to other neighborhoods. So how we treat Kensington is going to be a blueprint for other neighborhoods. You shouted out one yesterday at the press conference. So I say to you that we have to collectively figure this thing out under the leadership of Member Ketsey Lazada. She is ground zero, but she is not the only ground in Philadelphia that needs to be mindful of what this is. I know in unsuspecting neighborhoods, there are Narcam distribution machines. I'd have never thought that it would spread that wide. So we have to go to ground zero like in most epidemics or disease. You got to find ground zero and work your way out. So I look forward to the work, remember? Look forward to rolling up our sleeves with the Kensington Caucus and getting this figured out. It will not be easy. We can't do it alone. We need the mayor, we need private sector, we need nonprofits, we need hospitals working together. And so I look forward to that work, Mr. President. Thank you.
You're welcome. The chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President, and I echo my colleague, Chair of the Public Safety Committee, since I was also just added to the special committee, and I commend my colleague, Chairwoman Ketsey Lazada, who is heading this effort. But it's a template for, for the rest of the city. I wanted to also just once again acknowledge the brilliance rest of the city. I wanted to also just once again acknowledge the brilliance and excellence that was on display of Black men in the city of Philadelphia. We already spoke at great length about it, but I cannot underscore enough that our young people hopefully will watch this and see what great determination and resilience can do, and how there's so much support for them to shine, just like those we saw today in, in this chamber. I wanted to also speak about that May is American Stroke Month, joining with our partners, the American Stroke Association, which is an initiative of the American Heart Association in spreading the word about a sadly common and often deadly condition which is also preventable, treatable, and beatable. Stroke is the fourth-leading cause of death in Philadelphia, fourth-leading cause of death in Philadelphia, and Philadelphia's 3.97% incidence of stroke history is the largest among big cities in the U.S. Also, high blood pressure, a major contributor to stroke, affects 34% of adult Philadelphians. Everyone should know F A S D, FAST, the warning signs, which was spoken about by one of our public test, testifiers. Face, F, face drooping, A, arm weakness, S, speech difficulty, T, time to call 911. American Stroke Association will be having a stroke awareness webinar. Registration details can be found on my socials at CMNinaAhmed. Thank you to the American Stroke Association in Maine all year round for raising awareness through the Together to End Stroke Initiative. Second, I wanted to just talk about the other resolution introduced with Majority Whip Thomas, which is a classic Philadelphia underdog story, the RoboLancers robotic teams at Central High School. Last month, they took their lobster-inspired robot, Leonardo da Vinci, to Houston for the first robotics championship, where they competed against more than 600 teams from around the world. They're also funny, and they're smart, and they're brilliant. They were not favored to win. However, they outdrove the competition and brought the trophy back to Philly. Shout out to Coach Michael Johnson for a great game plan. A victory of Central High School, the school district, and the STEM talent pipeline locally. And, and companies will come to know Philadelphia as a hotbed of talent and put down roots here. Congratulations to the Central High RoboLancers and, and win it all next year again. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Lazada.
Thank you, Council President. First, let me begin by saying thank you to you and, and my colleagues who participated in the budget meetings in the Northwood community last night. Grateful for having you all in the Seventh Council District and hearing the concerns and the comments that the, the residents of that community had. That they're not accustomed to that, right? It was very clear yesterday that they don't often get visited by electeds unless it's election time. And so they are grateful. I received many positive messages after that meeting, and they are looking forward to us as their representatives to continue to come back beyond budget season to inform them about how their government works for them. And so I look forward to that in the future. I'd also like to thank Councilmember Phillips for co-introducing a resolution that recognizes Alfredo Calderon. The Latino community lost a leader over the weekend. He served as the Executive Director of Espida Inc. of Pennsylvania for over 20 years. Alfredo died suddenly, and his death is a reminder that, that we are here to serve and that each of us has a purpose, and we never know when our time is up. And, and Alfredo, over the course of the last year or so, really changed his, his perspective on life, his, his vision for the organization, his mission of his work and how he approached it. And it is a sad day because I think that all of that change really was for the positive. The Espida community has lost someone who prioritized bilingual learning, who prioritized families who were challenged with the English language. And, and they need our support as a city and as a community. His role impacted over 4,500 students who are currently enrolled there, but thousands more who have gone through the Espida education system. And so today, I ask for all of you to keep them in your prayers, to be as supportive as possible. They were looking forward to not just working with, with me as their representative in city government, but with the entire legislative body because their, their institutions were in multiple districts. And so they were really looking forward to working with this legislative body on expanding the services that they were able to provide, or that they are able to provide across the city of Philadelphia. So please keep them in your thoughts and prayers, and send them positive vibes. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rulandau.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues. I was excited to introduce a resolution today alongside Majority Whip Isaiah Thomas declaring the upcoming week, Tech Week here in Philadelphia. Tech Week is a great opportunity to acknowledge the brilliant Philadelphia tech community, which is driving so much information here in the city and nationally, the engineers, the programmers, the designers, and the visionary, visionaries. As Chair of the Information and Technology, the Chair of the Technology and Information Services Committee, I believe in transformative power of technology for good. As we saw at last week's 57-plus Blocks hearing, technology and data can be used to uplift communities, break down barriers, and empower all of us. This week is about harnessing the potential of tech and creativity to find innovative solutions for a better, safer, sustainable, more equitable Philadelphia. I'm also excited to recognize Temple University's mascot, The Owl, on winning the Philadelphia Inquirer's first-ever mascot bracket. Like many of my colleagues, I'm a proud Temple alum, and I've long been a fan of our mascot, Hootertie Owl. This mascot was originally chosen due to its popular symbolism for wisdom and intelligence, but has since come to represent resilience and adaptability, which I know firsthand Temple students routinely demonstrate. On behalf of many of us on City Council, congratulations to Temple University, beloved mascot, The Owl. Temple made, Temple proud. And on a serious note, too, I also just want to add my thoughts to the passing of Alfredo Calderon as well. He was one of my commissioners when I served, when I was the Director of the Philadelphia Commission on Human Relations. I got to know him quite well and his work to, to really transform the lives of Latino youth throughout the city. Thank you.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Good afternoon, Council President. Today, I'd like to also thank our Chairwoman of the Kensington Caucus for her town hall last night. I've, I've been to most of the town halls that we've had. I think I may have missed one. But it was the first time that we actually heard from children, and it was very enlightening. A few months ago, I visited Memphis Street Academy and spoke to the children there also. And one of the things that they brought up in our meeting was food insecurities among students. And then again, last night, members of the student government brought up the same topic. For me, that is just unacceptable. And children should not have to worry about where they're going to get their next meal, especially when they're in school. Their job when they are in school is to learn. And it's hard to learn when you're thinking about your next meal. Again, for me, this is unacceptable. That's why I'm glad that talking with my colleagues and talking with some people in the philanthropy field, such as Max Tuttleman and Caring for Friends Food Pantry in the Northeast, we are going to be starting a pantry at Memphis Street Academy very shortly, where the kids will be able to come and pick up food, not only for themselves, but for their brothers and sisters. Because the harsh reality is that so many kids, especially from where I come from, are growing up way too fast. They, in some cases, are in charge of taking care of their younger brothers and sisters. So I'm calling on this body to join with me and to make a commitment, just like I'm willing to make a commitment, to make sure that no child in the city of Philadelphia has to worry about where their next meal is coming from. So I look forward to continuing this work. I look forward to expanding this work. We talked to the kids last night afterwards, and they would like to participate also. And the good thing is, this will be run by the kids themselves, so that they learn some things. You know, not only the skills of running a pantry, but also learning that we don't always know what somebody is going through. And, you know, I'm not saying that I thought of this. I actually got it from Camden. The football team at Camden High School was doing it. And it struck me because when they were talking about it, they explained how they came to realize that they themselves did not know what some of their fellow students were going through. Because they saw students come to pick up that food that they'd never expected to come. So I think that as we move forward, we need to be thinking about the children of Philadelphia. And like I said, in, in this city, in this United States, no kid should ever go hungry, especially not when they're at school. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Harity. And we recently just wrapped up the members of the Special Committee on Food and Security Task Force. And so we definitely want to include you in that process, and whatever we can do to help your efforts in terms of helping the young people kick off the food pantry, we'll provide some additional resources and contacts to help you put things together. At this time, there are no more speeches on behalf of the majority. And so before I acknowledge Councilmember Thomas for a motion to adjourn, to adjourn, I just want to say, "Let's go Sixers!" And tell Tracy Morgan to keep it moving. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion to adjourn.
Definitely, "Let's Go Sixers." Thank you, Council President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, May 9, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. sharp.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the council stand adjourned until Thursday, May 9, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion carries.